Okay, well, 7 o'clock. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at item 1A, approve the minutes from July 1st, 2025 special meeting, July 3rd, 2025 special meeting, and July 28th, 2025 regular meeting. And I'll take one motion if you choose to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 1st, July 3rd, and July 28th.
Okay.
A second.
Second by John. Any questions, corrections, comments? All those in favor of accepting the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Item 1B, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Item 1C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Good evening. Okay. Okay. That's a comment. That's a... Thank you. Number 2, chairperson's report. Just be short tonight. Again, I'd like to thank the board for all the work you guys have done and gals during the superintendent search, all the hours that you put in, and we were able to bring Suzanne on, actually beginning as of today. Thanks to superintendent.
Welcome.
Welcome. And I'd like to just remind the board, there's going to be a meet and greet for our special ed director, Josh Martin, tomorrow at Community Center from 5:30 to 7:00, if you'd like to stop by and meet him. Item 3, superintendent's report.
And I guess...
Geez. This is your superintendent's report. I'm not going to say anything.
Our first delegation. Nicely played.
Yeah, right.
Delegated to Suzanne.
Would you like me to take this? I should. All right. Good evening, everyone. I think this is most likely going to be my last Board of Education meeting. So thank you for all of the support over the years.
I wish I could give you condolences for...
I'm going to start this evening with 3A, which is our elementary student enrollment update. As you're aware, we look at our... We keep a close eye on our elementary student enrollment update, probably starting about April, and then, you know, each month. We know we've had some bills come up, so has caused us to keep even a closer eye on a potential impact. In your package, you do have enrollment projections. This is as of last Friday, so our elementary schools did update this as of Friday. I will say I have one change since that time. So essentially, we are still holding, you know, at our guideline numbers. We do have one more child that has enrolled in grade 3, so that will put us over a guideline number in one section. You know, what makes our enrollment numbers... I'll just use the word interesting because that's a broad word for a lot of things. We're at our guideline numbers in grades 2, 3, 4, and 5. So when our children, like our new... Just for instance, Seymour, I believe, this summer has enrolled about 10 new children. Now, we've also had some children leave, so the overall impact might not be, but we do have, you know, 10 additional children coming in at different grades perhaps than where children left. So we... Admin team, this morning, we talked about a possible support, and what we feel would be very good for not only our staff, but of course, our children, is to have a paraprofessional available, you know, at Seymour to work, to be pushed into the 3, you know, into the 3 grades, not directly associated with a child with an IEP, which that's where our paraprofessionals are assigned.
So, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Just a clarification. Did you say you have a grade 3 or now over? You've got 1 class of 22?
Correct.
And then it looks like you're at capacity in 4. You're a little bit over in 2. Am I wrong about that?
We are on with 2. So grade 2, the policy guideline, which is the column all the way...
To the far right.
Far left.
Far... Okay, this is the policy guideline?
Right next to...
Got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
So the policy guideline for grade 1 is 20.
Okay. Oh, and you're right on for 4, and you're below for 5, it looks like.
We are right on for 5 as well.
Oh, you're above, sorry. Yeah. Yep.
So essentially, if we were to condense any of the sections that are at 4, which are only 2, that's kindergarten, grade 1, down to 3, all we're going to do is shift where that policy guideline is being met. We have a group of high-need youngsters coming into grade 1, so the preference is to keep that as the option for a little bit of a lower class size. And we still have enrollments. It's not atypical at this time of year, for the last couple of weeks before school, for our kindergartens especially, to see a little bit of an increase in those numbers.
Do we have an idea of how many... The fill rate of the new development, approximately? I know there's more...
So is it question of the hour?
There may be other phases.
I called them, I want to say about 3 weeks ago, and I... You know what? I apologize for anything bringing with me. I want to say they're about like 35. For some reason, the number 35 is in my head.
Okay.
But we do have children enrolled from the new development.
Yep.
So that's where we stand right now. We are keeping an eye on this. You know, we always said if we received 5, 6, you know, 10 children in 1 grade, the decision's easy, but when they're peppered throughout the grades, you know, we're, you know, kind of at a more challenging decision. This is no different than where we are this current year. We're at class size guidelines this time last year. And we have been, you know, over by 1 in a section or so in previous years.
So you... I'm sorry. So you're looking to add a parent for...
Seymour School.
At Seymour for grade 3? Or not just to be...
Not directly assigned to a child with an IEP, but to be a support parent, to be able to push into classrooms.
Absolutely.
So for the school, not necessarily dedicated to grade 3?
Correct. And that could be a good option if there's another, you know, child or 2. Just keep in mind, you know, the physical space of our Seymour classrooms are smaller than the physical space of our All Grove classrooms. Yet the policy number for the higher grades is a little higher than the policy guideline numbers for our younger grades.
We did drop it, though. For the record.
The policy guidelines?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know. Seven years ago?
I was saying, it was a bit ago, yeah. Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments or anything you want me to look out for when it comes to... I mean, this is a daily conversation with the admin team, at the elementary level.
Well, my only question would be just for our use. In All Grove School now, if we had to add more space, what do we... What do we have? Just 1 space left? If we had to create a space, or we have more?
At All Grove Space, we do not have classrooms. We would need to...
Without moving board?
Without moving board, or we would... We would need to lose...
Teacher's room?
So we've made some shifts. Right now, we have a faculty room. If we were to get rid of the faculty room, which is the classroom without a bathroom, so by law, we need to have bathrooms for children, K-1, 2. So we would need to reshuffle, which we could do. The bottom line is, we would be left without a faculty area space at All Grove School.
Which isn't a good choice. Just wondering what we have. How about Seymour?
Seymour, we do have 1, possibly 2 classroom spaces.
Which ones?
We have a science lab.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, we used that a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. And then there is 1 more possible classroom space we could shift around. A couple of years ago, we removed...
It's not the one we created in the library, is it?
Thank you.
The old quota room?
But to your point, that was able to take some of the staff out of one of the classrooms. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Because theoretically, we'll never have... We'll never go back to K or 1 being 3 sections.
We haven't in many years.
Right?
Yeah, we haven't in many years. It was a conversation, but if we went down to 3 sections in K, we're at the policy guideline there, so I guess it's just a matter of, you know...
I'm not advocating it, I'm just saying, protecting future.
Yes.
That it would be unlikely.
I like that protection.
Yeah. Easy for me to say.
Okay. Well, thank you. We will be keeping an eye on that. Item 3B, personnel update, retirement. We were... Since our last meeting, we have hired 2 more excellent paraprofessionals. We have hired Molly Cunningham, and we have hired Shantavon Huber. So those are 2 additional paraprofessionals. We have 1 retirement. This came kind of late in the day on Friday, Mr. Tom Carroll.
Oh.
Oh, Mr. Carroll!
I know. Tom has been the... He's been with us since 2007, so as obviously his post-retirement career, as you know, if you've been here, he's been a fierce advocate for our district, for our teachers. He's always spoken publicly in favor of our schools at budget meetings, and he is probably one of the most positive people, you know, that you can ever encounter. So we wish Tom the best, and as he journeys off into his second retirement, to enjoy all those things that he's going to enjoy.
Well, congratulations to the mall. Very nice. Thank you for your service, Tom.
And so that's what we have right now for hires. And I know you had a special meeting, but obviously, we have a new superintendent, so I figure we can, you know, announce that at this meeting as well. So welcome to Suzanne. And the last item I have, item 3C, is just really the opening week of school. Monday, August 25th, is a full professional development day for our certified staff. Tuesday, did I say October?
I'm fast. No.
I said August? Okay. Tuesday, August 26th, is convocation, and that is also when we do our meet and greet for our elementary families. That is on the, you know, pre-lunch time. So our teachers are gearing up for that. Our schools already had many of our teachers in there setting up. And then Wednesday, 8:27, we will be welcoming the children back into our buildings. It is an early dismissal day, and just a reminder that our early dismissal time has changed for the school year, and that is all available on the websites and on the calendar. And then the second half of that day is professional learning for both our certified and non-certified staff. And then we have a regular day, Thursday and Friday. And those are my announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
You're welcome.
Item 4, committee reports. So start off with the policy. We have a second reading of the Board of Ed Facebook page by law, 9024.
And we also have a first read of the use of private technology devices, which we'll both do in a second. We also have a policy subcommittee meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM at the Board of Ed offices, if we can have it there. Yes. Stroll it out. We're at... Oh, I lost my thing. We're at the point where we're tying up loose ends now, so Lisa Klein has been very diligent about getting after people that we needed answers from, and I think we have almost all our answers now, Lisa, right? So... And I think you all noticed that Lisa... Thank you, Lisa. Has been sending out blocks of the policies for review before we vote on the policies as probably a total, we're adopting the shipment in Goodwin policies with little, little adjustments, so they're very well-written. So we're going to get there, I think, either in September or October. So you did see it through, Ms. Smith.
Yeah. I'm going to stay until that gets approved. I'm going to be sitting out there with Joanna.
Okay. Okay, and we can do our first read of the... Sorry, second read of the use of the official Board of Education Facebook page.
Yeah, I was inclined to make 1 minor change, and as we are... The communications team was communicating, the minor change is on page 2. For pre-planned scheduled posts, we had said the Board of Ed would approve them all. We'd bring them all to the board and say, "Over the next month, these are the posts that we're going to do." We're adding 1 word, pre-planned post topics.
Where am I now?
Page 2, right at the top.
Approval process?
Types of posts.
Okay.
The first bullet item of types of posts, and the first bullet item of approval process. We will bring the topic, not necessarily what exactly, because A, we may not have actually assembled it. Yeah, usually, it's an image with the, you know, whatever we're communicating, but B, we felt it was kind of silly having it in the meeting materials and everything a month in advance. Not that everyone's perusing the meeting materials out in town, but it was just kind of, we wanted to have a little bit of a surprise element. So for example, the first 2 post topics that we would put out, should this be approved, is the first announcing, the Board of Ed has a Facebook page, and this is another vehicle for you to get to the information that's on our website. The second post, a couple of weeks later, once we get people following the page, will be showcasing the Board of Ed... Not the board, the town's app, the school district's app, app, that a lot of people don't know about, that they can download and have access to all of our stuff for the Board of Ed, as well as the school, the calendars, everything. So those would be the first 2 post topics. I haven't put... Or I... We haven't put together the... What it says for the app yet, but we know that's what the second post will do. We've already designed and built out the announcement topic, so...
So I interrupted you. What word are you going to change? And what... The word is going to be changed in what we're reading.
There's adding a topic.
Okay.
So...
And that's under the approval process, right?
Yep. Pre-planned scheduled posts must be approved. It will be pre-planned scheduled post topics.
Okay.
Does anyone have a concern with that? Or any other part for that?
No, my only question, maybe John can answer. Does that mean we have to come back and do it again, John? Or can we vote on it to accept it tonight?
I think we can vote on it tonight.
Okay.
If we're in agreement that you want to...
Well, that's later in the meeting for the actual...
If it went a motion arises, just that change being inserted, so think of your wording for your motion, true.
Okay. Is there anything else about that one? About the private technology one?
Still reading those.
You're still reading out there?
With the use of private technology devices by students, I do have some additional language for that. For the most part, this policy comes directly from shipment in Goodwin, based on some of our parent feedback and some of the surveys that were conducted. We did add the final sentence of the first paragraph, and what that says is, privately-owned technological devices will not be permitted in grades K through 8 during the school day, which is the start of school day to the end of school day. That has been our practice, so it's just being codified within the policy language. Okay, that's K-8. We'd like to add, this was a discussion during our policy meeting, subcommittee meeting, privately-owned technological devices will only be permitted during lunch and passing time for students in grades 9 through 12. So that's the, probably the biggest shift for us. It was the practice, little hard to enforce, the policy will help us to enforce that practice.
So I'm sorry, so I can go to my locker?
Yeah.
Passing time. I can go to my locker?
Go to your locker.
They can have their phones on, though.
Yeah, they can be the...
Yeah.
They can be on them. We're not doing the lock boxes or any of that.
Just can't come out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I don't have to surrender it at the classroom door?
Some teachers have offered that as an option. Some leave it up to the student.
Do I have it on my person as long as it doesn't come out?
That's correct.
As it sounds like.
That is correct. And the...
I'm sorry, but you're going to allow each individual teacher to determine what the policy is for their room?
No.
That's what that says.
Their phones don't... Do not come out during class time. They do not decide that.
No, I just meant, they can keep them on their person versus someone who might have a basket.
Some do have that option right now.
Going to leave that... Are we going to leave that option? It's not a big deal.
I do believe that the... I think they're like, the shoe holders have been purchased for every classroom, but if you walk in and say, "Oh, you don't have your phone," I have no way of knowing that you do.
Correct.
So it's there as an option. The principal and assistant principal of the high school will be tasked with kind of the consequences for violation of that, and that could be no longer an option, Mr. Welsh, for that particular student to not put it away.
Is that in the language? So I come in, I, you know, I have it on my person, I sit behind a big person in front of me, and I pull it out, and I... That's how I read when I was a junior in high school. I used to just sit behind the biggest person to read. So again, what's the consequence then? I pull out my phone, I'm on my phone, texting. What's the consequence in the classroom?
First consequence might be, "Put your phone away." Or next time you come into class, it goes in the shoe holder.
Yeah.
We're balancing personal responsibility with upholding a policy and a practice. This is a compromise. We've had many... Obviously, the kids are not in favor of this practice. And we have many parents, to be honest with you, on really both sides.
Right.
So this was what we've considered a compromise.
Did you feel it was... I mean, do you feel it was 50/50 with the parents?
It was hard to tell, because some of the parents might have children in younger grades.
Right. I can understand that.
Yeah. And really, the key is to keep that particular distraction outside of...
It's a disciplinary action.
Instructional.
Yeah.
The instructional time.
We do... I was just showing John, we do have a disciplinary action section.
Yep.
So...
Any other... I have a question, if no one else has one?
Okay.
I guess my... I have 2 questions. One of them is, on the policy, it says privately-owned technological devices may not be used during instructional time, but it says except as specifically permitted by instructional staff. I mean, that means as a teacher, I can say, "You guys can use your cellphones in my class," and I'm not sure if that's the direction we want this policy to go. That seems to be a statement, was it in our other policy that made a very open-ended, where some teachers can let kids use it and some don't, and then the policy is not being followed? So that's 1 question. And the other question, I agree with certainly kids not using them in the class time, but we're saying that K through 8 kids can't have a device in their backpack? You know, I think parents would be object to that in case of an absolute emergency. I think in 2025, sometimes that may be the only accessible device anyone has, and to take that away when we look at what's happened in this country, unfortunately, but sometimes it's been cellphones that kids have had that can make a difference or help in a situation. I just think there are 6th graders, or 5th graders, or 4th graders, who parents are working, who want to know, you know, that they've got a phone, that they've got off on the bus safely. We're telling them here they can't have a phone in their backpack, where I think this year, the kids were allowed to have phones, but they couldn't have them accessible. I don't know. I just think...
We're actually, it's off and away, so we don't collect them. They just are not able to use them during the school day, but they do have them on their person or in their backpack.
But this policy, the way it's written, says they can't.
It says privately-owned devices will not be permitted in grades K through 8 during the school day.
That means not allowed to have them.
That means they're not allowed to have them in the building, and that's why...
I also don't know... I don't know if I agree with allowing, especially K through 8, them having a phone and overriding the security protocols in place. You know, letting them override and making the communication out. There are guidelines and protocol in place. Emergency services, the staff, the office, the chief, the faculty, all have a plan and know what needs to be done, and we're going to potentially have the students who are understandably scared, I think everyone would be scared in one of those situations, just start making calls. I don't know if I agree with that.
I think it's happened in none in our town.
It has happened in other towns, yes.
It happens. I just think it's become such a part of our society, and it is a safety issue, and I think the most important thing we want to think about is safety. And I look at the cellphone for a younger kid. They should never be allowed to be using in school. But I think parents expect that if the kid has to contact them or vice versa, something happens, I just think that's become more of a norm today.
As far as I understand, I have not seen anything in the budget that said we disconnected the front office phone. There are school secretaries or there's staff. I know when the secretaries have to walk away or have their lunch break, there's coverage. We've been doing this for over 100 years. It seemed to have worked.
Yeah, my point's not in school. My point is, if they're getting on the bus in the morning to go to school, something happens, they fall and get hurt, they now have no communications with anyone, and that's...
I just wanted to tell you that the intent of this was not to tell the kids in K through 8 that they couldn't even bring an own technological device to school. The intent was they couldn't use it.
So I just put...
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that, but I think it should be worded a little.
I just added "use of."
Yeah.
So yes, "use of privately-owned tele..." I wish I could talk. "Technological devices will not be permitted in grades K through 8," and that should resolve it. I mean, I think that's what I meant anyway, but I think that should resolve the issue. And then the second line, if you wouldn't mind stating it again.
Sure.
Yep.
So I've added "use of." "Privately-owned technological devices will only be permitted during lunch and passing time for students in grades 9 through 12." This is a good starting point. You know, we're taking something that's been such a large conversation, you know, certainly in East Granby over the last year. You know, we're trying to do what's best for kids during the instructional day, whether or not they see it that way, but also recognize our families have kind of their concerns, and we really have been well, done well with K-8 in terms of it not being a distraction, you know, within the buildings. It's going to be a little bit of work for the beginning of the year.
So at K-8, we would anticipate that they would leave it in their backpack.
They do now.
That's what they do now.
They do now, even in the middle of school.
They're afraid to test it.
And to shed a little light, a different angle on it, too, is sometimes we have students who forget emergency purposes. They're making arrangements, or their parents are making direct arrangements with the students, and the students are getting on different buses, or getting picked up with somebody. And as far as I'm concerned, the personnel, the staff at the school are responsible for their children when they're in their care, so they need to know if you're scheduled to go on, have something different than your usual, they need to be the first to know about it, not a special arrangement made directly with the student. And then when they're trying to move 200 students through to get them out of the building, and all of a sudden, you see one of the children going in the other direction, we have to stop everything to figure out what's going on. It causes a huge distraction, slows things down, so it's not just an emergency component of it.
Because you know they're going to bend the rules.
So how does this language sound, though? Would you like me to read it one last time?
One more time.
You said you're okay with it, or yes? Read it one more time.
No, I'm going to put the language...
I'll take one more time.
Okay. "Use of privately-owned technological devices will not be permitted in grades K through 8 during the school day, which is defined as the start of the school day to the end of the school day." Privately-owned, or "use of privately-owned technological devices will only be permitted during lunch and passing time for students in grades 9 through 12."
As everybody knows, study halls was originally in there, and then decided that they would not be allowed to use through our study halls either. Yeah.
We put our study halls under the instructional time.
Yes.
So.
Sounds good to me. Did shipment in Goodwin have language on that? Or you said some of that was their language?
This is exactly their language, except for those two sentences I read.
So what is their language about high school students using it during the school day?
It's silent on it.
It's silent on it, okay.
So their first paragraph just stops after the superintendent of school.
I mean, I can see why we want to do that, but I also can see that kids are going to be waiting till the period's over so I can get on my phone. I would be doing that every period myself, but I get it. It's a start, and hopefully, we can get it where you're focusing on what they have to do in three minutes to get to next class on time. But it's a start.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else, anything? Okay.
So we can make these changes, and then it'll be ready for the second reading.
Second reading. Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, this is the practice that the principals are adopting, so you're going to see it in the handbooks anyway. So the policy will support the practice, because again, we've already had this practice in place. It's a little different than at the high school for next year, but this is what they're going with. So if we decide something drastically different that goes against what the practice is, then obviously, we will need to change our practice.
Okey-dokey. Anyone else? Item 4B, budget. Anything new on the budget? And my only question on the budget, if we're going to, I'm supportive of putting a pair in Seymour, but somewhere in the budget, we need to have those dollars, and we've -- do we know where that's going to come from?
We have the funding in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Item C, curriculum. Anything new from curriculum people?
We haven't, but I think we have.
Okay, today?
Yeah.
Maybe we don't. Negotiations? We're still negotiating. We do have a couple.
But we do need to start looking at it when the negotiations for the next contract coming up are going to start. So we need to start planning for that.
Okay.
To this coming year.
Right.
Okay, facilities. Ricky's not here. Is there anything new? Or there is anything new since the last time we met?
We do need a facilities subcommittee meeting, because we need to look at our capital plan to make sure that we have that ready for the Board of Ed approval early September, because the Board of Finance typically requests it in October.
Good. And communications?
Yep, just, we're really excited about the potential of the Facebook page. I think in posting Suzanne coming in, we did it through the website, through the news, but it garnered a lot of interest, people hearing that another avenue for getting their information's coming. I'd like to thank Steve Mosher, who worked with me on this, kind of speak the same technical language. So once this is approved, we'll be able to post news announcements to our school platform, and at the same time, they beam out to Facebook. And I think we're going to gather a few more people, because it's part of their everyday. That's where they're getting a lot of their news. So really excited. I think we all are, Lisa, Amanda, and I. So.
Yeah, appreciate the effort you guys have made, and certainly, in hiring of the superintendent showed us why we want to have a communications group, because we're looking to see, how could we put it out there since we couldn't have put it out there directly from the board, and we needed to put information out there, so it's good.
And it also gives us, we now have the ability to post to the portal itself. So that news announcement was posted by the Board of Ed communications team, and our policy kind of handles that component, too. So I think it just kind of closes some of those gaps and brings a little more transparency.
Very good. Anything else? Item five, recommended actions. We had a motion to approve the Board of Ed Facebook page bylaw 9024.
I'll make a motion to adjust, to approve the Board of Ed Facebook page bylaw 9024 with the adjustment to note "post topics" rather than "post."
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm in with a second. Okay, discussion comments. Seeing none. Are there any?
You all support it, right?
That's all.
And we know where you stand.
We know.
I know.
Yeah.
We have to do this in public, though, but we know. All those in favor of the motion signify a saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Item six, agenda items for future meetings. We have, looking for a graduation date for 2026. I know they've been approached, the main office, I've been approached.
I've been approached.
The other accident, we won't do it on a Friday, but it's a little too soon for us to do it, but we don't do it on a Friday. That's one day, I don't think any graduation group ever wanted it to be.
I thought when Tony was here, he was like, it actually might land on a Friday next year, is that?
Graduation.
Last day of school, wasn't it?
Oh, the last day of school, right. And so we graduate sometimes before the last day of school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Once again, 180 days.
So we can definitively say that it will not be a Friday.
We could definitively say that.
Okay, so we cannot definitively say that. We're trying not to make it a Friday.
Tell us adopted.
We typically do it like the first meeting in October over the last few years since the law has changed to allow it. I haven't looked at the calendar since then to see where that Friday falls.
Great, so it's up for future discussion, as it says on the agenda.
I hope we're able to do it in October. I mean, we used to do it in, what, like, March or February?
Oh, yeah.
It was real late, where we couldn't pick the date till then.
Do we do it in September?
No, can't do it in September.
Because it'd be a good opportunity for Suzanne to meet some of our community. People will come for this.
She will now, since we haven't picked a date, so.
I'll be there. I'll stay there.
Welcome to the jungle.
Okay, anything else on that?
Nope.
Item seven, comments and visitors.
I'm Joanna Tazowski. I was just attending, but welcome to the new superintendent, and we see it's going to be your last meeting. Thanks for all that you've done for our schools and our town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. And thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate you being involved. Any other comments? No other comments? Item eight, executive session. Personnel matter, new superintendent contract for '25, '26. I get a motion for executive session?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I'd make a motion to move into executive session, and I would invite Suzanne to join executive session.
You have a second for that?
Yes, I'll stick.
A second for the minute, okay? All those in favor?
Do you want to come?
Missy's is done, actually.
All right, we're all set. I looked at her. She would have nodded.
I'm passed around a copy from Kyle of what you guys negotiated in executive session last time, wanted me to do for Missy. So that's, that's, it's just Suzanne, yeah. Okay? All those in favor of the motion on executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, executive session?
Yeah.
7:37.
7:37.
That's pretty good.